Good afternoon, everyone. It is a little bit after five thirty. On January thirty first, two thousand twenty-three, I would now like to call this meeting to order. And now, did you please rise with the invocation and pledge of allegiance? Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you to this wonderful start of a new year. Look, we thank you for sparing us once again with the situation and tornado that came through our area last week. Father, we ask that you continue to cover us, to bless us, and continue to show us the way that you have for us to go in this upcoming year. We thank you for all that you have done and all that you're going to do in this city and this region and this country. Jesus, may we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on to item three. Item three, a motion, motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes impending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a, we have a motion from Mr. Burge, a second from Mr. Childs. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Ennigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, the first thing that we have on the list is Mr. Jay David DeRozier. Please come forward, state your name and address, and we have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is David DeRozier. I live at thirty-eight fifty-three Cockburn Street in Orange. I would just like to commend the council for taking the time to name a day after Henry Lowe, who is my friend. He has worked hard for the city. I've worked with him on the depot and Orange African American Museum, and he's a, he was a very dedicated individual, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bye, brother. Okay, next we have Rose Seymour and Alicia Booker.
Okay, I'm Rose Seymour. I'm the manager of the Orange Train Depot in Orange, and this is Alicia Booker. She's the president of our organization. Uh, we are here tonight to also recognize Henry Lowe, because he was a very active member with our Orange Train Depot. Uh, in fact, when he moved away, uh, he came back last, uh, depot day, which was in, uh, in May, and surprised us all, and of course, immediately started giving work, you know, anything that we needed him for. So, um, we're hoping that his, uh, American African Museum, uh, you know, comes to fruition for him. Um, he's, he was such, um, he was just had the passionate, uh, he was very passionate about that. Um, so we're here to present to his family. Alicia has it here. It's a certificate of appreciation, and, uh, we have the break that we are laying in the back of the depot in his main line, so he can be sitting in the hall.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Vinatress Edwards.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Vinatress Edwards. This is very hard for me, because Henry was my dear friend. Whew, uh, sorry. I just want the city council to know that he loves teaching everyone who all, I mean, he talks and talks about you all the time. Uh, it was like, Vinatress, if you need anything, you can go to Larry, you can go to Carl, you can go to Brad, you know, before David's time. So, I mean, just go to them, but I just want to say, Mary, Miss Henry, thank you. Thank you for stopping to take the hospice, for taking care of him, uh, to the last. And I just want to say, thank you. And after this, we will be going to the museum, African Museum, and we will be, uh, going to the memorial there to flowers and a cross, uh, down for Henry. And I have something for his brother, uh, Jimmy. He's my brother now. And I want to say thank you for being my brother. This is, hello, I got a picture of him for you.
Thank you so much, honey.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Johnny Ray Lowe.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
First, uh, I want to give thanks to my heavenly father for allowing me to stand here before, uh, uh, let me introduce myself. My name is Johnny Ray Lowe. Henry Lowe was my brother. And I am the last surviving sibling of our father Leonard Lowe, who was better known as Shorty Lowe. If memory serves, it was during the early to mid-sixties when I first had the opportunity to meet this brother. My dad briefed me before his arrival by telling me that he's been living in California. He's in the army. He loves horses. His name is Henry Earl, but we called him Jitter. So me being an inquisitive and only child in my immediate family, my first question to him was, how did you get that nickname? And he went on to tell me that in his earlier days, there was a dance, a popular dance called the Jitterbug. And, uh, he was proud of himself for being able to do that. And people would come around and go and find him just to bring him to the events, just to dance. And, uh, and then later that Jitterbug shortened itself down to Jitter. And, uh, it only took a short while of being in his presence to get a grasp on understanding the market. Uh, it really fit his personality, uh, unsuppressed drive and determination. Uh, I was so proud of him, and, uh, he asked, I asked him a little bit later. I said, Dad said you like horses? And, uh, he said, yeah, I was a professional jockey. I was in California. And I was still a little, okay, this is what he got. Uh, but he had me these pictures here. As you can see, they're pretty worn and torn. But the reason why they're like this is because I took these pictures and put them in my notebook and took them to school and bragged to everybody that y'all found, and I have April. And he is not only just a brother. He lives in California. He is in the army, and, uh, he's a, he's a professional jockey, and he won the Kentucky Derby. My mom, uh, got on to me for kind of exaggerating a little bit. But, you know, she, she, she dealt with it because she knew what I was feeling. Uh, uh, we had a standard family joke, uh, that, uh, we would say, uh, one of the questions was asked, Jitter, uh, where's Jitter? Have anybody seen Jitter? And the, that was, uh, well, you know your brother. He's somewhere trying to be president. And, uh, so, uh, he had enormous aspirations, uh, to be larger than life. Uh, one of his inspirational people was Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and like his hero, he had a deep desire to uplift the African-American community. And that desire was no further stronger than in the city and community he so loved, Orange, Texas. The fact that we are gathered here today to honor him and during the same month that we celebrate Dr. King would seem to indicate that perhaps he made some inroads in that pursuit. The fact that you've chosen to honor his efforts in this way make me both proud and humbled. Proud to be his brother and humbled by your efforts to honor his life. It is my greatest wish that each and every individual involved with my brother's final endeavor contend to continue to support his dream, the Orange African American Museum, so that his favorite city becomes even more educated and united in the future. In closing, I would like to express my most sincere and personal thanks to Ms. Vinatress Edwards, whom my brother often and firmly referred to as Lady B, and to her husband, Mr. Martin Edwards, for their limited support to assist my brother for his lifetime and after his passing. And finally, on behalf of the entire Lowe family, I'd like to express our sincere gratitude to Mayor Larry Spears Jr., the Orange African American Museum, and all those involved in making this day possible, restoring this prestigious honor and recognition. I can envision him looking down and smiling and saying, thank you, thank you, thank you for all your support.
Next, we have Jean Garcia.
Hi, I'm Jean Garcia. I live at ninety-two oh one Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. Here in Orange, right next to the, uh, LCM Admin Mill. Now, I understand that in no city is it legal to flood your neighbor. But that's happening in Orange. Public funds have been utilized to make a spillway right up to my ditch right in my front yard with no improvements done to the drainage. Uh, that spillway is lined with lime. I've got photos on Google Drive that I can share. And, uh, that line, according to the contractor, was to make it never leak water. So it's a line pit that's just waiting to spill into my yard. And I would like some help, trying to talk some sense into whoever's planning this, because, uh, you know, my family sleeps fifty feet away from that accumulation of water, and they've made it all dump out right into my front yard. So I'm just here to, to try to find out how it is that something that's illegal can be done. And when you complain, when you go talk to drainage folks or, um, the city planners, they have no jurisdiction, and it just doesn't seem like there's anything other than wait for damage to occur, um, before you can make any kind of claim at all. And it just seems to be uncivilized, and I, I'd like some help, please.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We will have your city council members that represent your area contact you so we can see how we can help you with that issue. Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? If not, we will move to city announcements, city staff announcements. Mr. Trey Hand?
Mr. Mayor, so what I'd like to do is first of all acknowledge our Division of Visitors Bureau staff. Uh, they have scheduling conflicts for the season, so they're not with us, but Leanne Dallas-Herald, as well as Randy Judice have worked many hours in terms of, uh, working up all of the logistics and, and the schedule for the upcoming Mardi Gras event, which is scheduled the weekend of February ninth, tenth, and eleventh. I would like to just share a few highlights and ask everyone, please note their calendar. So beginning on Thursday evening, United Way and Dow will present together Thursday with a concert beginning at six thirty PM at the Riverside Pavilion next to the City Boat Ramp, featuring the band Spazmatics. From there, we'll move into the Friday night, uh, evening event, which CBB staff worked very hard. We only booked one of the premier zyco artists that's playing zyco music today, and that's Keith Frank and his zyco band out of Louisiana. So that concert is scheduled to begin at seven o'clock that evening. It's a free, family-oriented event. Uh, coolers are permitted for this particular event. There will be food vendors on site. Again, this will be held at the Riverside Pavilion adjacent to the boat ramp. That will lead into the big Saturday event, which is February eleventh, of which the CBB staff have worked a, a munchkin parade in support of the main Mardi Gras parade that evening. The munchkin parade will be at one o'clock, again, at the Riverside Pavilion near the boat ramp, and there will be activities throughout the day, which will lead to the Chamber of Commerce' big Mardi Gras crew parade event, which will be scheduled at six thirty. So again, please note your calendar. A big weekend in downtown Orange, the weekend of February ninth, tenth, and eleventh. So Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Trey Hand. Also on that week, also for those of you who are here from the media, um, I have a special announcement for you. So as he stated, on February ninth, uh, United Way and Dow will be doing a concert with Spazmatics. February tenth, when we bring in Keith Frank, it is also a very special evening, for I would like to make an official announcement that I would like to give a key, a key to the city to Mr. Gary Stelly, the voice of Orange. Gary Stelly has done so much for this community through hurricanes and every inclement situation. And so, for years, thirty, forty years, I believe, he's been doing this for the community. And so, um, I've spoken with him. He is very excited, as well as his family, and so we would like to do that for him on February tenth, and we would like for the community to come out and support such an amazing man that has done so much for so many decades. Okay? With that being said, we're moving now to proclamations. Very excited about this first one. So proclamation, Henry Lowe Day. So let me say this to the Lowe family. I'm sorry I don't have one of my suits on, but the job that pays my bills, I had to get here at the last second, so I wasn't able to wear a suit. But I will say this. I, I want to stand as I read this proclamation, because Mr. Mr. Lowe deserves every honor possible. Um, he made such a great impact on so many people. And I'll say this, uh, I've never said this publicly, and I'll say it now. When I first ran for these positions, I started this in two thousand fourteen. There were, there were some people in this community at this time that weren't very happy to see an African-American man that was married to a Caucasian woman running for a position. Some of the very people that I thought would be in my corner weren't, but Mr. Lowe was. Mr. Lowe made it. When your own people turn on you, that hurts. But when your people come back and say, well, I got you, it makes it even more better. And I thank God for Mr. Lowe. He really did love us. I used to always laugh because I'd have to bend over to talk to him because he was, he says shorty, but God bless him. God bless you and your family. And here we go with this proclamation. So proclamation. From Office of the Mayor from the City of Orange. Whereas Henry E. Lowe was born in Corvus, Texas in nineteen thirty-seven to his proud parents Leonard and Lila Lowe, Henry graduated from Wallace Senior High in Orange, Texas. And whereas Henry has one sister, Berla Jane Lowe Shinkle, and three brothers, S.T. Lowe, Willie Earl Lowe, and Johnny Lowe, he also had a herd of nieces and nephews. And whereas Henry joined the U.S. Army in nineteen fifty-five, he served four years. He became a junkie in nineteen sixty, training in riding horses, which he loved. Henry E. Lowe won his first race in nineteen sixty-five. And whereas Henry was married to Lily Fay Richard Lowe, he raised three stepsons that he truly loved. And whereas Henry departed his life November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two in Orange, Texas, he was loved by many and will be truly missed by his community, friends, and family. And whereas Henry wanted to have the first African-American museum up and operating, but God saw otherwise. And whereas a special thanks to the ones that were by his side upon his passing, Southeast Texas Hospice, Marvin Edwards, and Vinatress Edwards. Now therefore, I, Larry Spears Jr., Mayor of the City of Orange, do hereby proclaim that today, January thirty-first, shall be recognized as Henry Lowe Day in the City of Orange, Texas, and witness whereof I have set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Orange, Texas, to be here and to fix this thirty-first day of January, two thousand twenty-three. Congratulations. All right, I was gonna get this framed really, really nice and do all my, if I could take a picture with all of them.
Okay.
Y'all come out here.
Yeah, we got the seal. We got the city seal. Yep.
How about here?
Yeah, that's fine. And I'll squat down like Henry was. So the, the, the previous proclamation is one of those things that, um, really brings to light the, the comment that you hear from people who say that we have to give people their flowers while they're here. And as you can see, this is one of those things. And so, with that being said, I'm also honored to give these gentlemen their flowers while they are here. I had a chance to hang out with these gentlemen that you see on the third row, uh, this, this past Saturday, and I got to learn a little bit more about the Orange Amateur Radio Club. Uh, these gentlemen, believe it or not, I didn't really understand exactly what it was, even though I'm a collector of vinyl. I'm thinking, okay, well, maybe they just talk to people on the radio or, or listen to music in another country. But if there was ever to be a cataclysmic situation or something where we were to lose cell phone or any type of communication, I know just who to call, and that's these gentlemen right here. And speaking with them, while I was talking with them, they're able to make contact through radio antennas from Claiborne Park that day and reach people in New Zealand and to transfer information of things that could be going on. So if anything ever happens, you guys are on speed dial, okay? With that being said, proclamation from Office of the Mayor. Whereas the Orange Amateur Radio Club, a five oh one C three organization, will celebrate its seventy-fifth anniversary of affiliation with the American Radio Relay League, which started on January twenty-seventh, nineteen forty-eight. And whereas the ARRL is the national organization which supports amateur radio members with radio frequency spectrum defense and a wealth of technical support. And whereas the OARC continues to provide emergency and auxiliary communications with the American Red Cross, Salvation Army, Department of Homeland Security, National Web Service, SERD, Orange County Office of Emergency Management, and other SERD agencies. And whereas the OARC has provided backup emergency communications during real-time disasters such as Hurricane Katrina, Hurricane Rita, and the tsunami catastrophe overseas. The OARC also supports public service events, marathons, bicycle races, air shows, and MS-150 events. Whereas the OARC is an all-volunteer organization with a focus on serving local communities and surrounding areas. And whereas some of the OARC radio operators serve as storm spotters and the skyworn system for the NWS. And whereas the OARC has had many well-known founding members such as Martin Toman, Ted Decker, Davis Cooper, Dr. Howard Williams, and Hector Brown the Third. Now therefore, I, Larry Spears Jr., Mayor of the City of Orange, Texas, do hereby proclaim January thirty-third, two thousand twenty-three as Orange Amateur Radio Club Day. And the City of Orange can encourage all citizens of our city to join in celebrating the Orange Amateur Radio Club's seventy-fifth anniversary. Congratulations. Don't be scared to come down. Because I'm telling you, we gonna call on you if something goes bad. How you doing, man? Are you gonna do it like that? Or is it gonna hold it like this? Mr. Bailey?
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. You have anything you want to say? I think you got, they gave him at least a little taste of what y'all, because it's very interesting.
Well, we had, we had a blast this weekend. Our run-of-the-day, uh, for three minutes. For three minutes? Well, we made a personal record for myself and the club. We, we made more contacts than we ever made in, you know, at our build day events. Uh, we had, what, six hundred and fifty-one, I think, contacts. Uh, the band was crowded, but we had to pass information, you know, from, from them to us and get it all along. In the event that it was a real crisis, you know, we could go stay and support the county or the city and however, however they needed. Uh, we don't want to be policemen, but we can aid in whatever, whatever effort needs. We're putting our, our private radios. And it's just a hobby we love and, you know, we practice so that if it does happen, we can do it, and, uh, we can, we can respond. And, uh, we just love our community and, and, you know, it's the way we want to try to give back. So, anyway.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item seven, consent agenda. November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, planning and zoning commission city council special call meeting minutes. December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes. January third, two thousand twenty-three, special call city council meeting minutes. And January tenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion from Mr. Burge and a second from Mr. Childs. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Ennigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Onto item eight, resolutions. Consider a resolution ordering a general election for the purpose of electing a council member for place three, single-member district three, and a council member for place six at large, providing for the date, hours, ballot, early voting clerk, and notice of election, providing for polling places and judges, providing for other matters relating to the city election, ordering a runoff election if necessary to be held on June tenth, two thousand twenty-three, and determining that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law. Mr. Coombs?
Uh, Mayor, Council, good evening. Uh, yes, it's, uh, it's election time again, May sixth, general election. And this is calling the election, I call it, whatever the correct term is. Uh, and again, five minutes open until, don't worry, seventeenth.
Okay. All right, do we have any comments or questions? No comments down there?
No comment.
Okay, all right. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion and a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Ennigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Onto item seven, I mean, I'm sorry, eight B. Consider a resolution entering into a joint election agreement services contract with the Orange County Elections Administrator to provide election services for the City of Orange. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, Council, again, like we've done in the years, several years past, the, uh, we're allowed, we're allowed the council to, they are, uh, administering our elections. Again, a little different on polling places, actually, an election day, so we're very good in different, uh, polling places.
Okay. All right, any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion from Mr. Childs, a second from Ms. McKenna, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Ennigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, sir. Onto item eight C. Consider a resolution authorizing a membership to Texas Smart Mob Program, Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor, the, um, the city needs to, or is asking to participate in this program because it, this program offers certain, uh, items that we can't get anywhere else specifically right now. The, the, this department needs blood alcohol tests for stops, and this is the only place we can find. So we need to sign up for this, um, program in a word.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Zito?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Ennigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. On to item eight D. Consider a resolution awarding a contract to DXI Industries for liquid chlorine for the retreatments of the water well fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Jay?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is an annual contract to provide some thirty-plus tons of liquid chlorine.
Uh this is an annual contract to provide some thirty plus tons of liquid chlorine to treat our water system here. City staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Jack. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Jack. Item A E. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one with M K Constructors for the Greenway Park Drainage Improvements in connection with the American Rescue Plan Act, Aqua Funds. Mr. Jack?
Yes, uh this change order will add sixteen days to the original contract, which had a upset limit in total days. Due to poor weather, there will be no additional cost incurred by the city due to this change order. And it's still planned to be completed sometime this spring. Staff recommends approval.
I will make a comment. Uh this has been a wonderful project. I've heard from several residents whose properties backed up to the ditch. And between the city's clearing of the foliage and trees and things of that nature, the residents are excited that all the rain just takes off out of their yard and gets out of there. So very happy to see that. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, have a motion?
Motion.
I mean, I wasn't good, but we got Mr. Childs and Mr. Burge. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Jack. Item eight F. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one with Triangle Civil Services for the Riverside Pavilion Drainage Improvement and Ballards Placement. Mr. Jack?
Yes, this change order is for ten thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars to do additional unexpected repairs to destroy a drive as well as some deteriorating drainage inlets and installing removable ballards to protect the common spaces and delivery areas. The change order represents approximately five percent of the original contract and with no impact of the delivery schedule. Uh staff recommends approval.
Well, I'd also like to once again add that I checked out the development and it looks good. That was a problem area for our concerts and being some Riverside Pavilion.
Yes.
And then I like that we put up the security uh polls because the last few events we've had, I've seen people drive through there or take off through there with all terrain vehicles, and that's not safe for the kids that are in the area. So thank you for that, and actually a double a double approval, and I appreciate it. Any comments or questions for Mr. Jack? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Jack. Item eight G. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Arsenio, Wilson, and Cole for an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty five thousand sixty dollars for professional engineering services for Cooper's Gully Phase Two B. Mr. Jack?
Yes, thank you. The city was recently advised that there is residual funding available through the C D V D G, uh dis- our disaster recovery funding to extend the drainage ditch concrete mining from Navy Park to the Eighth Street area. Uh we'd like to seize this opportunity to do that. We need an engineer to perform that work. Uh this will expand the contract for Arsenio, Wilson, and Cole to complete that work uh with plans to be advertised sometime late this summer. Staff recommends approval.
Wow, thank you, sir. That's an awesome win for us. Okay, any comments? Have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Henning, a second from Mr. Childs. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Jack. Item eight H. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission. Mr. Zito?
Yes, Mayor, Council. You probably have noticed the new tower that went up behind Northway. That's our new uh radio tower for the Public Safety Network in Orange County. We'll be getting off of the other one. Long project, long road for that, but uh basically the regional planning commission is we were in partnership with them on this grant, and they're turning over the equipment to the City of Orange. That's what this is for, for the city manager to accept that memorandum of understanding. Recommend.
Well, congratulations to you because you've been working on that for several years. So, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. We definitely need that when things happen. Lord help us that things don't happen this year, or we have it in case it happens. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Thank you, Mr. Zito, motion passes. Okay, here we go, the vehicle one. I need one of these vehicles. All right, item nine A. Because this six dollars a day ain't making it. Consider a motion declaring the following equipment surplus and authorizing disposal by auction through Renee Bates Auctioneer. Um I'm gonna just go through, I'm not gonna do each serial number. Do you have to read each one? Does that make it?
Serial numbers, uh I've been posted, and I'd like to give fairness to anyone that there.
They can go read if they want.
The vehicles and the back and add any comments you want.
Yeah, that'd take a long time. Okay, two thousand eighteen Chevy Tahoe, two thousand seventeen Chevy Tahoe, two thousand seventeen Chevy Tahoe, two thousand nineteen, two thousand seventeen Chevy Tahoe, two thousand eighteen Chevy Tahoe, two thousand eight Ingersoll Rand Air Compressor, nineteen ninety five four five 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 D backhoe, two thousand thirteen Ford F one fifty, two thousand six Ford F seven fifty, two thousand eight Ford F one fifty, and two thousand ten Ford F one fifty. Mr. Jack?
Yes, thank you. Ten vehicles, two pieces of equipment, all have been replaced and are no longer needed in the city fleet. Staff recommends that these vehicles and equipment be declared surplus and disposed of through auction.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
Motion.
Uh Mayor, I'd just say that the motion should reflect the items listed in the agenda with those that have serial numbers is the motion for uh the disposal of all.
Okay, do we have a motion to reflect the items? Are they as listed with the VIN numbers that I did not read? And um if anybody would like to read them, they can come out to City Hall. We have a motion.
Motion.
All right, let's take it. We have a second from Mr. Bailey, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Goodson, I appreciate it. That's why we have you as the lawyer. All right, item nine D. Consider a motion affirming the Third Amendment to the Disaster Recovery Services Contract filed in between the City of Orange and Ashbrook Incorporated, as signed by the city manager effective January sixth two thousand twenty three. The amendment will allow the current contract to be extended until August twenty sixth two thousand twenty three. This Third Amendment will allow the contract to be, oh Lord, ceteronous with the contract signed by Orange County, Texas. This amendment may be executed simultaneously in one or more counterparts, each of which shall be deemed an original. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, Council, uh it again to be clear, I did sign this after I talked to the mayor a couple of weeks ago. So we'll put on the uh the agenda of the date. Uh it was that Friday where I was asked, where it says, hey, your your contract's about to is expired. That's when I called him, said, I'm gonna sign this because we're not gonna do that without a disaster contract. They know we was about to have that thing that happened last week. But anyway, so we're gonna sign it and put it on here. The way this is all gonna line up with the county and the other municipalities in Orange County, we are currently going through steps for a pyramid for one similar disaster contract.
And for those who may not understand, Ashbrook Services is actually in the situation where we have a hurricane or a tornado or a situation like that. They're the ones who come through and help us remove trees and debris from across the city. And and no disrespect to the council, but in those times, for situations, as the mayor also served as the emergency manage corp- ma- emergency management coordinator, therefore, I was able to approve him signing it until we were able to get to this meeting. Okay? But in the other situation, I turned it back over to Fire Department and let them handle it all. All right, do we have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Coombs. Item nine C. Consider a motion approving the newly the newly positioned Deputy Director position for the Planning and Community Development Department at job grade thirty two, exempt position with starting pay at thirty one fifty five per hour, plus incentives as eligible, and standard employee benefits. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, Council, uh as y'all know, we've been talking for for a year. What is this next chapter in the in the city? And I say chapter, this next four or five years gonna look like uh with the construction of Gold Triangle Polymers Project? Um it's gonna be very busy. We've seen this in the last few months, especially all departments. But again, in the last uh few weeks, we've kind of focused a little bit on uh planning and community development. Within that department, there is not a deputy director. I think throughout the city, everybody has a a the next person, the next deputy, somebody like that. You know, talking with Kelvin, what do we need? Do we need, you know, what could help him most these next few years? And we decided deputy director, uh again, I don't like to bring new positions to you mid fiscal year so that it's not budgeted. But again, if we wait till October with the new budget being passed, then we have to go out, post, and hire. So it could be easily, you know, this time next year before we hire somebody. So I'm talking with Kelvin, and Kelvin's here to discuss, y'all have any questions about this person's duty, their responsibilities. But I'd like to go ahead and y'all approve this, that then we can start working up a uh job description, get it posted, start taking uh resumes, applications, and try to have somebody on board. You know, even even if it moved quickly, it'd probably be two months. That's again, this is kind of maybe who might be out there interested, if we find a qualify candidate.
Not many comments on that?
I agree with what he said.
I think we need to be prepared.
Yes.
I think. I think so, too.
I think Kelvin basically just said, help.
Absolutely. Yes, I think he needs help.
All right, uh that being said, do you have a motion?
Motion.
We have we have a motion from Mr. Childs, a second from Mr. Burge. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Mr. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey? All right, motion passes. Help is on the way, brother. Motion passes. Okay, item nine D. Consider a motion approving action taken by the E D C in January tenth two thousand twenty three to withdraw a one hundred and sixty seven thousand E D C incentive awarded August tenth two thousand twenty one to Free State Sellers at forty seven oh two Townhouse Parkway, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three two, concerning proposed eligible infrastructure improvements because of the project not moving forward at this time. Mr. Train?
Yes, sir. So Mayor, Council, the project owner has made the decision not to move forward at this time with a consideration that we could revisit it at a later date. Uh supply chain issues and some other factors have led to this decision. So at this point in time, the E D C has already taken action. Now it goes to you. Subject to your approval, then what we will do is move this funding into the available E D C funds to consider future projects that are in the pipeline. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I think it's very admirable admirable of them to work with us. Um definitely support Free State, and we'll definitely work with them when they are ready to move forward with their other design adventures. Do we have a motion? A motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Train. At this time, city manager report, Mr. Coombs?
No report.
Okay, uh report from City Council, I'm gonna start on my right this time, Mr. Bailey?
No report.
Okay, Mr. Childs?
I'm gonna hold mine with just the spirit of the night. Uh Mr. Low was a gentleman, gentleman down to the heart that he gave me when he first met me.
Ms. McKenna?
Three things, thinking about Memphis and what has happened here. I just want to thank our police and fire and first responders for being the great men and women that they are for Orange, Texas. For Mr. Low, I loved him dearly. He helped us for a long time through city block grant funding. And then he also was there for uh supporting me for city council and was always there for anything I needed. You know, on a personal note, I always saw him over at the casino, so he was in there. Uh he would be in the jockey, and I was being the lose the money person. So so it was always a delight to see him there. But a true gentleman in every arena, so really glad to have called him my friend and to have been able to serve him in the last days of his life through our hospice. Um and Mr. Gary Stelly, um for years, I when I see him, I say hello, Mr. Hero and Mrs. Hero, because they have truly been my heroes for many years in this community. So I'm thrilled that he will have that presentation.
So on my way here tonight, I was driving on Sixteen Street, right next to our gravel truck, who had been out in this dreary, cold, damp weather, picking up storm debris. And I also saw a Facebook post saying, shout out to the City of Orange for being out in this horrible weather, picking up the storm debris. So I just wanted to say thank you to that sanitation department for taking care of that in spite of the weather that we face today and tomorrow and probably the rest of the week.
Um I too want to speak in honor of Mr. Low as well. Um when Ms. Benetra spoke, that he loved us, each and every one of us. He did love each and every one of us, I know. And he also supported me as well. So um I was proud to call him my friend like everyone else was. And again, Mr. Gary Stelly, he uh he's a great asset to our community and has served us, uh served the community for many years, and um he had a way with words and a nickname for everybody. And so I can't wait to honor him, so.
Yes, once again, thank you to everyone who came out tonight, of course, to the radio people, the family there. Wonderful guys. Got a got a chance to learn a lot from them. To the wonderful Mr. Low, as I spoke about that earlier, um you know, thirty three years old when I was first getting in all of this, forty two now, and so uh to have his support at a time when it was real tough, definitely meant so much to me. Um once again, thank you to our first responders, uh to Chief Bill Bowe, who actually called me during the tornado and was like, you okay? I'm over here checking on stuff, and he was riding by my house and everyone else's house and all over the community. So thank you, chief. Uh thank you to all of you and to our police chief and everyone that's out there making sure we're okay. Um especially during all these situations. I'm scared to say, Lord, what's next, because I hope it's nothing else. Um just real quick, a few things that I do want to talk about. The Sabine Park Apartments issues that you've seen on the T V and in the on the news and things like that. I just want to thank those outside of the City of Orange, as well as the city staff who have been who have been helping us with those sixteen tenants that are still in those apartment complexes with water and things to help them during this inclement situation. Very, very appreciative of all of those who are a part of that. The tornado issues, I've spoken with several people at City Council and the city staff. STAN is a system that we have set up here in our community that we need to continue to encourage everyone to be a part of. Um it it definitely caught me by surprise when I got the phone alert that said, get to your basement. And of course, in Southeast Texas, we don't really have basements, but it was like, this is serious, where to say, get to your basement. And so those are the kind of things that we need to continue to push